Here.
Present.
Board of Education, accept.
I nominate Bruce Fletcher for Chairperson. Beth Manke.
Yes. Rich LaViere. Rich LaViere.
Yes.
Amy Parati. Yeah.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yap.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. I believe you come right up here, Chairman Fletcher. And just to convert, let the record indicate that Dr. Bruce Fletcher has been chosen as Chairperson of the Newington Board of Education. So you get to sit at the head of the table.
Is that remember to eat first?
Uh, yes, if this were Thanksgiving, you would get to eat first as well. All right. Our second nomination this evening will be for the Office of Secretary. In accordance with the bylaws of the Board of Education, the function of the Secretary is as follows. The Secretary shall be responsible for records of board meetings. Minutes of the board meeting shall be furnished to each board member before final approval for the record. I will entertain a motion to accept nominations for the position of Secretary.
How's it feeling? Do that.
A second?
Second.
Nomination, motion passes. Nominations are now open.
I would like to nominate Danielle Drozd for the position of Secretary of Newington Board of Education.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close nominations.
Move the Board of Education, close nominations for the position of Secretary.
Do I hear a second? Very good. This is an opportunity for any candidate of, of member of the board to speak. I think I was supposed to say or, but it said on my script. I will now ask that Craig to call the role for the record for choice for the position of Secretary.
Michael Beranda.
Yes.
Danielle Drozd.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Manke Hutt Wagner.
Yes.
Rich LaViere.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yap.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Let the record indicate that Danielle Drozd has been elected Secretary of the Newington Board of Education. Chairperson may appoint a vice chairperson at this time.
I would like to appoint Beth Manke Hutt Wagner as the vice chair.
Congratulations to our newly elected officers. I ask that Dr. Bruce Fletcher assume his new role and as Chair for the remainder of the meeting.
All right.
Dr. Fletcher.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me get on board here.
Alrighty.
So we're going to move back to item B on the agenda. And now that I have taken over the meeting, I'm going to turn it back over to you, which you want me to read the proclamation?
This is, I am going to refer to you on that.
Okay.
We do have some members of our custodial and maintenance staff here tonight to receive that proclamation.
Perfect. Whereas Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, has been proclaimed Custodian and Maintenance Workers' Day. And whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers thoroughly clean, dust, scrub, refinish, sanitize, repair, paint, and maintain all areas for safety and comfort in all buildings on a daily and nightly basis. And whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers have shown dedication and conscientious performance in carrying out their many tasks to maintain and improve our school buildings. And whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers maintain a closely working, close working relationship with school staff. And whereas the Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers show a willingness to go above and beyond the workday to keep our schools shining at all times. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, as Newington School Custodian and Maintenance Workers' Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington School Custodians and Maintenance Workers on this very special day. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation.
Very good. And maybe our guests can come forward, Jason Plum and his team, to receive this. I'll let you kind of hand that off. Is this mic on?
You have to just push the button.
There you go.
There we go. This would be if any of them wants to speak.
All right. Well, thank you very much. It means a lot. You know, rising to the occasion is stated in there, you know. COVID isn't new to all of us, but it's something that we're still maintaining and we're still cleaning to those standards to this day. So, you know, you know, these folks, you know, they really have gone above and beyond as stated in the document. We appreciate it and I'll post it proudly in my office. Thank you very much.
Jason, would you mind introducing your, your team that's here this evening?
Oh, sure. And by the way, I'm Jason Plum, the new supervisor of custodial and maintenance. And with me, I've got my team, Adam, Timmy, Ben, and Mark, who are, we've got two maintainers and two custodians here this evening.
Would any of you like to say anything?
This is your chance. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming out today.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to board comments. Beth Manke.
Jason, the team is going to hear some comments from the board so they can, you don't want to miss all this positive feedback.
You got this thing, let's get out of here.
I know, it's late, it's late, I understand.
So, just really what, quickly wanted to say, being in a lot of different schools and a lot of different towns, I see a lot of things and Newington schools truly are the cleanest, those floors literally shine. I was just at the high school for an event last week and it was just, it was gorgeous. It looks like somebody is cleaning on the hour, every hour, especially in the past year and a half where they know what's been put upon you to keep our schools safe and keep our kids safe. Just thank you from, from the bottom of our hearts for all of the hard work that you do and the dedication you put into making our schools look the absolute best. So thank you so much.
Ms. Weaver?
Okay, sorry. But I just want to say and echo Beth's thoughts here. You know, being a student at NHS, it was never, like, I just don't know how you keep it clean because I know myself as a messy person and then times that by all 1,500 students and I just say, God bless, thank you so much. There is never enough gratitude in the world that we can have for you and a lot of what we've done in the past two years is highlight everyday heroes. And we focus a lot on every part of the school system that makes our system run. And we want to make sure that you guys get your due, because really, every single function of the school system is necessary and so essential. And you guys stepped to the plate so much. We know how it happened overnight. In March, we had our last meeting, not in this building, but another one on March 12th, and then two days later, whoop. So I just want to say thank you once again for that. And maybe, you know, two years later, however many months later, and just know that that is still so important to us. And not only are we grateful, our students are grateful, our staff is grateful, but our community as a whole is grateful for your work every single day because it is not an easy job and we want to make sure at least someone thanks you every day. Thank you.
Danielle?
I just have to share a very quick story to piggyback on what they said. I took my mom into the high school the night of the cabaret and the first thing she said was, can you find out what they do on the floor if you make the Board of Ed? So here's like a 75-year-old woman, it's the first thing she noticed. So thank you for all that you do. It is definitely noticed by everyone, so thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Brummett?
So I have said this a million times in the course of my two years here, but certainly with the pandemic, our custodial team, our maintenance team has been invaluable. Case in point, a few weeks back, we had that unfortunate flood at the high school and to this day, I hear people saying how quickly your team reacted. It was folks that came in from all over the district, not just those assigned to the high school. And that's just one example of the kind of work that you do in our district. And the cleaning that you were able to rise to the occasion of with COVID protocols that were in place just was so greatly appreciated. And you took on so many more roles than just that because it was an all hands on deck approach for last year and a half. And many of you, you all are everyday heroes and you've been acknowledged for that in Board of Ed's past. So thank you again and congratulations on this acknowledgement.
Anyone else from the board? So what I'll do at this time, I'm going to open it up to public participation. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to speak and address the custodians as well, you can do so at this time. Please come to the table and state your name and your address and we'll provide you with a microphone. Anyone that is online, you can call in at 860-665-8736. And you can join in by also stating your name and your address. Can do it?
That was the right one.
And if you get the wrong number? Order pizza.
Is that the one you have on your list?
Oh, no, it's not. Okay. Okay. So the phone number to call is 860-665-8659.
And it's also on the screen.
It's also on the screen. All right. Representative Turco?
Yes. Where should I go?
Come on this side over here. Good? You're good.
State Representative Gary Turco, 98, Williamstown Court, Newington. First, thank you to our wonderful staff and everything you do to maintain our school buildings. And I know especially with COVID, you've done double duty and unprecedented what you've had to do to maintain and clean and, and keep everything running. So thank you very much. And to the board, let me congratulate all of you that have been reelected and those of you who have been elected for the first time. I look forward to working with you on educational issues, especially to help our entire town and our children. I do not pretend to be an expert in education policy. It can be very complicated at times and there's a lot of discussions on education policy at the state Capitol. So I'm going to need help on making sure that I'm supporting things that are the best for Newington. I know we have 169 towns in the state, 151 different state rep districts, and not one policy is always good for every single community in the state. Sometimes it is and sometimes it's needed, but other times, maybe it works in Fairfield County, it doesn't work so well in Hartford County. So I'll need that advisement. I will do my best to try to communicate with all of you on your personal or your newington.gov emails, whatever you prefer, when big policy initiatives are being introduced, that I'd like to get your perspective and maybe you could advise me on that. I will also do my best to try to keep the funding coming to Newington, increasing our ECS funding for the schools so that could help you with your budgeting. And I'll do my best to make sure that those, you know, additional mandates are funded and if not, they are things that we all believe strongly are needed and cannot wait. So I love all of your suggestions because you're on the ground, Beth and others. I know you work in the schools, so you know better than I do the real needs of our students and our teachers and the resources. So please share your ideas with me and let me know how I can help all of you and congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Turco. Anyone else from the public? Okay. So with that done, we are going to move to item E2. And I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Chairman Fletcher.
That's going to be a hard one to get used to.
I promise I'm going to do my very best. And, and board members, everyone will have their own mic. The, there's a backlog on the mic order. So my apologies that you're having to share mics this evening. Tonight, I just wanted to, oops, I've lost my, give me one second to get to the right page. There it is. Alrighty. So, good evening, new and returning board members. I just want to congratulate our newly elected officers. Chairman Fletcher, Vice Chair Manke Hutt Wagner, and Secretary Drozd. I look forward to working with each and every one of you over the next two years. You will bring a unique perspective to the work. Earlier today, I attended a National Honor Society induction at the high school. It was a wonderful event and reminded me of why we are all here, to work on behalf of the students of Newington Public Schools. An officer of the National Honor Society, Nicole Parafati, spoke about the importance of service. In her remarks, she stated that less than 30% of all Americans participate in volunteer service in their communities. Your commitment to serving on the Board of Education is significant. There will be some long budget meetings and some challenges along the way, but it is exceptionally important work. At our next meeting on November 29th, I have organized a retreat to provide all board members with an overview of our district initiatives and the important work going on at all of our schools. Our building principals will be on hand to share quick overviews of what is going on at all seven schools. I've also invited Attorney Jessica Ritter to attend the meeting to discuss the legal roles and responsibilities of the board. In the packet you received this evening, there is a link or in your packet, the bylaws, a listing of all the bylaws of the Board of Education. These are all available online on the Board of Education section of our website. If you have a chance to review them before the next meeting, that would be great. However, Attorney Ritter will be able to expound on those bylaws and other important legal mandates that impact the Board of Education. In your time on the board, you'll have opportunities to celebrate with our staff and students, learn about the budget process and what it provides to the education of our children and much more. One of the most important jobs, one of my most important jobs, is to keep you fully informed of what's going on in the district as well as the ever-changing state and federal mandates that impact education. Since it's been late and a long day for many of you, I just want to take a few moments to review some of the, the importance of the relationship and the work that we will do together on behalf of our students. So what I'm taking from, some excerpts from the Code of Ethics for Board of Education members, I just want to highlight a few of them. So Board Members and Superintendents ensure that the opportunity for high-quality education for every student and make the well-being of students the fundamental goal of all decision-making and actions. Board Members and Superintendents are staunch advocates of high-quality, free public education for all Connecticut children. Board Members and Superintendents honor all national, state, and local laws and regulations pertaining to education and public agencies. Board Members and Superintendents recognize that clear and appropriate communication is the key to successful operation of the school district. Board Members and Superintendents will always carry out their respective roles with the highest level of professionalism, honesty, and integrity. Board Members recognize that they represent the entire community and that they must ensure the community remains fully informed on all school-related matters. Superintendents and Board Members recognize that the Superintendent serves as the Board's, Board of Education's agent and will, in that role, faithfully apply the policies and contracts adopted by the Board. Board Members adhere to the principle that they shall confine the Board's role to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, while the Superintendent shall implement the Board's policies. Board Members and Superintendents both recognize that they serve as part of an educational team with mutual respect, trust, civility, and regard for each other's respective roles and responsibilities. Board Members are committed to the concept that the strength of the Superintendent is in being the educational leader of the school district. Board Members and Superintendents practice and promote ethical behavior in the boardroom as a model for all district employees. And lastly, Board Members and Superintendents consider and decide all issues fairly and without bias. So I just wanted to run through those as sort of a foundational piece of information for our work together. And I just want to reiterate that you'll have a lot more comprehensive instruction when Attorney Ritter joins us in a few weeks. But I want to once again thank you all for your willingness to serve on behalf of the students of Newington and I look forward to what we will accomplish together. So thank you very much. And then I will turn it over to Chairman Fletcher.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. Okay. So that concludes our new business item. I will once again open it up to the public for a public comment because it is on the agenda. So if there is anyone that wants to call in, the real number to call is 860-665-8659. So if we have anyone that calls in, are you monitoring those?
Yes.
We're there, okay. All right. So while we're doing that, what I will do is I will open it up to comments and remarks by the board members. Is anyone, wouldn't anyone like to go? Ms. Hutt Wagner?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say that I'm very excited to be here for, for my second term. What an exciting first term last time. As Ms. Weaver mentioned, we were sitting here one evening and the next day, it was like a poof. But I think that we, as a board, worked really hard together under some great leadership to, to make sure that our kids still got the best instruction and we're safe throughout it all. I'm so excited to see new faces at the table and so excited to work with you and to get to know you all better. I think that we all bring something really unique and different to the table and I think that's really, really important for our kids. One of the best things I think that I've found on work, working on this board is that we work in a bipartisan way to put kids first. We are student-centered and we're doing what's best for these kids because many of us are products here of the Newington Public School System, or have children in the school system. So we are incredibly invested. To those of you that are new, my advice would be to go to as many events as possible. Those events are from student council, nominations to graduation, to recognizing our teachers. You'll leave feeling so inspired and so incredibly proud to be on this board and to do the work that we're doing. So just very excited to go from here and to get some great things done for our kids and so excited to be here with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Brenda?
Thank you. So first of all, congratulations to Dr. Fletcher. I think, I remember when Paul Vasella was put in that chair and Josh Holman showed up and said that he was meant to sit in that chair and I think that statement applies to you too. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And when we do the little swap of the seat, the same goes for you. I think that Beth, you know, you and Bruce proved over your last term that you are here for kids first. You are great, you know, role models for this community and I think everybody should be proud to have you both sitting at the head of this table. So thank you both for stepping up to do that. One thing, just really quick, I just, you know, a lot has been happening, you know, campaigns happen and all the things. One thing I would just ask this board is to consider, when you have questions or you have concerns, you have Dr. Fletcher here as your chair, who I'm sure will be more than willing to answer, but Dr. Brummett as well is very approachable and will answer all questions because I think we are in a time where misinformation gets spread around on social media pretty quickly. And it's, you know, it's up to us to make sure that the residents, the parents, the teachers, the students are getting the, the real information and, and we have the source right here. So please just consider that before you, you know, post questions or thoughts or anything like that that may confuse the public. But to the new members, congratulations. You know, as Beth mentioned, we do work together. It's a bipartisan group and I just really look forward to working with you all and doing everything that we can for the students of this town. So thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
Come on, I cannot talk. I'll make this brief, but I just want to say congratulations to everyone that's new on the board or returning or a mix here. And congratulations to our officers. I'm basically Beth and Mike said it all, but I think one of the, the most important things, you know, I was looking at all of our votes from, from the past two years and I think one of our only five-four votes was on snow days, of remote learning days. And we all agreed, actually, if this is the only five-four vote, we're good with it. So we all actually agreed on the vote anyway. So I think that really speaks to what the board is all about and, and that's really working together with students in mind. This was my home, this, not this place, but Newington Public Schools for, for 13-plus years and that's the reason we're all here is to continue to build upon the incredible foundation that has been built here. And it's just one of the things I think we're all proud And it's just one of the things I think we're all proud to, to be a part of. So, like Mr. Brenda said, ask questions. I think one of the, the greatest things is the learning process of being a board member. We all vote with the confidence that, or run with the confidence that we want to change everything and do all of this and sometimes it takes a little bit of time for us to learn how this process works and I'm very grateful that I've been able to, to get acclimated and you have great people here to, to acclimate you as well. So, I think this is a wonderful process. This is, you know, our, our society at work and it's just a wonderful thing to be a part of. So, I'm grateful to be here. I'm grateful for all of you to be here and I look forward to the next two years.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Just really quickly, I want to say I'm super excited and congratulations to everybody and looking forward to doing great things.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I want to say first of all, thank you to all of you for showing your confidence in electing me to be the chair. This will be my first time in a public school as a chairman, but not my first time as a chair. I look forward to learning because there are a lot of things that I'm going to have to learn as a leader. I just want to say thank you also to the people of this community that showed confidence in each one of us and they elected us. We all ran on, some of us ran on separate tickets, but once we were elected, we all worked together and it's my aim to have us to work together in a bipartisan way. We have to put our politics and some of our, our ideas and things behind us. You know, we have to show this community that we're ready to lead. One of the things I believe in is showing strong leadership, not just saying, but showing it. We went into this COVID thing, nobody knew what to do, but our administration has done a really good job. All of the staff and teachers of our schools have done a jam-up job. I mean, that's not a real intellectual thing to say, but it's a jam-up job. And I really, really am impressed by them, having worked with most of them. I'm only two years out of working in the Newington Public Schools and I have seen so much progress and I have a lot of confidence. One of the things that I want us to do is to be strong in our resolve as we go forward. There's a lot of negativity in the news. We have to keep our focus on Newington. We have to focus on bringing this town and these schools out of this COVID as safely as possible, but as soon as possible as well. But we need to all work together. And once again, I appreciate the confidence that you've shown in electing me and electing me here and I will certainly work to earn your respect and I will work to do what is best for this community. And I want to say one more thing so that you know where I stand. I also say, we do this for the kids, but you need to understand me a little bit because the contact with our children in our school classrooms are our teachers. And if we don't support our teachers and we don't have their back as a board, we're hurting our own students. And having been a teacher and having been a principal as well, one of the things that I always did as a principal is I had my teachers' backs. And we love our children, we love the kids in this community, but if we don't have a good staff, if we don't have good teachers, the educational system here is, is just going to be flushed away. I want to see the quality of the education increase. I've been looking at international data. I've traveled around the world and I'm seeing third-world countries rising above some of the educational systems in the United States of America. I want to put a stop to that here in Newington. I want us to be proud of our school system. I want to have the best teachers that we can have and I want to have more of, I don't know, more diversity is what I want to say, more diversity in our teaching staff. And I know that Mr. Farisi works to do that. He is a wonderful guy. He's doing a great job, but we want to get behind and we're going to support them. So, I want you to know, teachers that may listen to this or hear about this, I've got you back and I care about our kids, but I'm going to do everything I can to keep our teachers happy and keep them where they are and doing a good job. A happy teacher educates a child well. Thank you all very much. All right. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. The doctor has got your motion of the night.
So moved.
There you go.
I like that.